On it looks like.
Yes, sir. We got some folks popping in, Colin Kirk-Nerkman is still there, Richard Parker and Tess JV and maybe actually Johns.
All right, I show five o'clock, we'll just take another moment to see if we can get Nolan or not Nolan, Mike None on here.
Man, I think it's okay to proceed.
All right, I mean, he is items A and B, so.
Nolan, you ready?
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Officially welcome everyone to the May 4th, 2020 City Council meeting. This is our work session and we are doing this meeting virtually, so there'll be some changes. And we'll talk a little about those as we go. For this meeting, we're convening via Zoom telephone video conference and some of you may be through our YouTube channel. This is posted on the city of Burlington's website and is also identifying how you can join there. The meeting is being recorded and if anyone is having technical connection difficulties, we ask that you please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon. The phone number for John is three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. I'll repeat that one more time. It's three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. And John can assist in either sharing your comments with council during the meeting or after the meeting, or assisting you with getting connected while the meeting is in progress. For staff comments or to address council and/or staff during the meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so by raising your hand. It's a feature in the Zoom meeting or pressing star nine on your phone so that our meeting host, IT Director Scott Bibler can notify me that you wish to make a comment. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is being live streamed on the city Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com slash C O B N C. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltutis and I'd like to confirm all members and persons anticipated on our agenda are present and can hear me. So members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative so we can make sure we have audio from you. So starting with Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
I'm present.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Excellent. Our staff will do the same thing, starting with City Manager Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney Huffman.
Here.
You're a little quiet there, David.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Bob Patterson.
Here.
Peter Bishop.
Affirmative.
Do we have Mike None?
I am here finally.
Excellent. And Todd Lambert.
I'm here.
Excellent. So thank you, everyone, for that audio check. The first item on tonight's agenda is item A. It's our build grant application for the Maple Avenue corridor. For the city council to consider in addition to the May 5th, 2020 city council meeting agenda to adopt a build grant resolution. At this time, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike None.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The renewed Maple Avenue plan was adopted in June of 2019. Start my video. There we go. There we go.
Excellent.
Adopted last June of 19. Soon after this adoption, city staff worked with Tool Design, the same firm that conducted the Maple Avenue study, to submit a federal grant application for the better utilizing investments to leverage development, which is the BuilD, B U I L D. The $25 million grant request was submitted in July of 2019. Although we did not get approval of the 2019 request, the application package received a highly recommended status from the federal DOT staff. It was also forwarded for additional evaluation at the Secretary of Transportation's office in Washington, but did not make the final list of awards. This information was communicated in a very positive grant debrief conference call with city staff and the DOT staff from Washington. And based on that conversation, we would like to develop a revised and enhanced grant application for the 2020 build application with the same $25 million. Tool Design will again provide support and has added an expertise to expand what we call, what the application process calls the benefit cost analysis, the VAC section of the grant. The benefit cost analysis was a key section discussed in our debrief. And we want to simply expand that from 2019 to resemble the guidance we received on that conference call. Also to note that Burlington remains in the rural category for the build grant and no local match will be required if the grant funds are awarded. The grant program does intend this year to award up to 50% of the $1 billion in the build grant. 50% of those to rural areas. That's a little bit of a change. To accompany the grant application, a resolution of support has been drafted for your consideration, which would also allow city staff to submit the grant package. The resolution is very similar to 2019 that you passed and the build application is due May 18. If desired, I would ask that the resolution be adopted tomorrow evening to allow us to move forward with the agenda packet by the May deadline. I can answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council members regarding the build grant application?
The feedback was mostly about the benefit cost analysis or was?
Yes, man, that was to expand it, put more analysis into it is from, you know, future maintenance, existing maintenance, the addition of the bike and pedways, things like that to do more. They have economists on the panel. That was some of the comments given to us that we need to put some more analysis on the benefit cost in our, in our submittal.
Other questions from council? I will share council or sorry, City Manager Watkins and I had the opportunity to have some of those meetings before. We fully, or after we submitted the application, but before we got notification that we did not receive it last year. And I want to commend the council and our staff on all the planning work that we've done around the Maple Avenue corridor. Obviously, we've talked a lot about planning as a city for quite some time. Burlington's always been good at planning. And that was recognized up in Washington by the DOT folks. They, they really appreciate that we've done the groundwork on all different types of plans around the city and all that feeds into the Maple Avenue corridor project. So we've been working towards this for a long time. And I think this is the polish that we need to, to hopefully get us across the finish line on, on this grant. So any other questions from council on this? All right, otherwise, do we have consensus to put this on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting? If so, from council members, can I see a hand raise? Okay, let the record show that we have consensus from myself, councilmember Owen Butler, Hikes and Ward. Okay, thank you, Mike, on that one. Next on our agenda is the Community Development Citizen Participation Plan update. Public hearing will be held during the May 5th, 2020 city council meeting to consider adopting updates. This time, I'd like to again recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike None.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a citizen participation plan before you. HUD requires this update periodically, but this also was a recommendation from our consultant that currently is doing the five-year housing update. Also specifically in this update will be the CARES Act funds for coronavirus relief. This was just released in March, as you know, so things have been moving at a different pace. In order to receive those funds, you have to have your public, public participation plan updated. The current plan we're operating under is from 2011. So this will be an update to that one. It includes requirements for public hearings, public meetings, explains how the community development technical assistance is provided by our staff. It also explains how information is made available to the public and the process for citizens to provide comments on the required CDBG plans. Additionally, HUD released a memo on April 9th that also directed grantees to establish expedited procedures during times of emergency, which the coronavirus obviously is one of those. There's about five points, the changes that you'll see on in your packet, it's bulleted. I'll go over those very quickly. It clarifies the distinction between public meetings and public hearings. It discusses how to set up a public hearing and the public comment period. It identifies which organizations are consulted during the consolidated plan process. As I mentioned, those expedited procedures for the, to draft, propose and amend plans during times of emergency. And it puts a simple definition that was missing that talks about a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan and annual action plan. So those are the summary of the changes right there. And if acceptable, after we would have the public hearing to receive comments, the city council would commit, consider approving that with these changes. I do want to mention that HUD allowed by their memo directive, a five-day public comment period. That's why we're able to do these things. Obviously, they're asking us to make changes at a rapid pace. And with that, they waived their normal public involvement process. We did post this May 1st. So by tomorrow, that will be, that will meet their guidelines.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council? All right, I would like to note that the public hearing, as Mike mentioned, will be held tomorrow on May 5th, 2020 during our city council meeting. The public may email their comments in advance of the meeting to the email address publiccomments@burlingtonnc.gov or they can call three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine and enter meeting ID eight, four, eight, five, zero, zero, seven, six, one, four. Followers who wish to speak in the public hearing can do so tomorrow night by pressing star nine. And the host of the meeting will open a line for them to speak. And all that information is also posted on the city of Burlington's website. So we encourage folks to participate in that public comment session tomorrow evening. Mike, anything else you want to add on that?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? All right, we'll move on to item C on our agenda. Burlington Downtown Corporation Transition to a Hybrid Model. At this time, I'd like to recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop. And I'd also like to recognize that in attendance tonight, we have Burlington Downtown Corporation President Coleman Rich and our interim executive director, Sarah Beth Hardy. So I want to extend a thank you to both of them for participating in tonight's meeting. So Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It is great to see all of you. It seems like it's been so long since I've seen so many of your faces. So first of all, I hope everybody's doing great and again, great to see everybody's smiling faces. This project, we're talking tonight about transitioning the Burlington Downtown Corporation and the city of Burlington's relationship from one of city, the city doing a contract with an independent 501(c)(3) organization with its own staff and transitioning that to a more of a hybrid quasi-public-private model where the staff would become city employees, but the relationship contractually would still be there with a volunteer board downtown and the city of Burlington. So let me take a little bit of a step back. Back in January of this year, the city of Burlington and the BDC received a resignation letter from the executive director, Jessica Passion. At that time, city staff was challenged or saw an opportunity to look at this operation and how it was operating and functioning and if anything could possibly be improved before taking steps forward to move with a new executive director. And during that time, staff took several steps. We evaluated the, the program's performance over the last 10 years based on grants and projects that have been done. We looked at the structures of other cities and downtowns throughout North Carolina and what they're doing and how they do their downtown and MSD functions. And then we looked at changes within the city and the city's own departments and what's happened with us in the past five to 10 years and how those possibly impacted what we were trying to do downtown and get accomplished. Probably the biggest takeaway from those discussions with council members, staff members in other cities and even our, in our MSD businesses and building owners downtown was that folks wanted to see more tangible results and more projects happening. They wanted to see more of the dollars generated through the MSD fund and more of the dollars provided through the general fund on the street turning into real projects. So that was one of the biggest takeaways. Another takeaway was that the city of Burlington, in the past few years, has developed its own economic development department, bringing on staff members and focusing on business recruitment in a very intentional way. So a couple of those changes led staff to explore ways that we could maintain the, the alignment of our department and look at ways that the BDC was working with the city, but then possibly ways that we could strengthen that relationship and try and get more results out of the relationship. And the ways that we were looking at doing that was providing more administrative and budgetary support to the BDC staff by having them be a part of the city department. So right now, the, the current BDC setup is an executive director and a communications director. Without an executive director, there is no administrative support or support for an individual outside of the BDC board. What we are proposing in this transition is providing a stronger set of resources to the executive director or the new director of that BDC so that more things can be accomplished with, with the dollars that have been provided while also finding some efficiencies and some savings. I did say that the city is doing economic development now as a practice. There are, there were some overlap between what the city economic development department was doing and the Burlington Downtown Corporation was offering in their services. What we're proposing is bringing those items together and operating in more alignment and efficiency together with the BDC and that staff member to achieve those development goals and get some of those new projects happening with, with that setup. In talking about making this transition, I said that we, we talked to a couple of different individuals. One of the folks that we had a, a very in-depth conversation with was Liz Param. And she is the director of the Main Street, North Carolina office that manages all of the Main Street directors and Main Street offices throughout the state. And when we talked to Liz about our ideas about possibly looking at other structures, Liz identified the, the quasi-public-private partnership as a best practice that she had seen a lot of cities and towns who do downtown functions moving toward. And the reason she felt that it was a best practice was it creates a stronger public-private relationship with the city. It provides a stronger budget for the downtown department to work off of. It provides a liaison relationship between the city and the downtown management businesses. And I think it provides more freedom for the board of directors to focus on ideas, projects and grant awards that they can do and not managing the day-to-day responsibilities of that individual employee and that office. The, I mentioned efficiency as well. And one thing that this would do that, if, if we brought it a little bit closer with the city is there would be a lot of overhead costs associated with operating that office that would be driven into projects. So instead of paying for an additional copier or phone or a lease payment, we'd be putting that money directly into projects in downtown. And then one final point I wanted to make about, about the transition into a hybrid model is there are currently 64 North Carolina municipalities that are running a downtown program. As of today, 23 of those programs are doing a hybrid model where the staff member is a member of city staff and they work with a nonprofit board. 22 of these downtowns have a city department that manages their, their MSD and their downtown. 13 have a 501(c)(3) relationship, which is our current relationship. And then there's a few more that have 501(c)(4) and (c)(6) designations. So in the last few years, the majority of our downtowns have moved into a hybrid format that provides this different public-private way of supporting downtown development. What we are proposing with transitioning to a hybrid department would bring and the manager of the downtown program into the city as a city staff member. So what we are proposing is that, that individual, and we are proposing that that individual would be Sarah Beth Hardy, would come into the city as a city department and work with the economic development department. The BDC board would retain all of its membership and still contract with the city. And that contract would have them focusing on public art, the downtown grants programs and the committees that are of the Main Street organizations. So you have an economic vitality committee with members, you have a design committee with members and operations and executive committee. And then finally, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank. Sarah Beth, help.
I'm going through them in my head. Promotion, design, organization, economic vitality.
And, and promotion, folks, that was the one that I forgot. Thank you very much. And another point of the alignment that we have with, with the city and the BDC. And it's interesting, we've actually made transitions and steps to be more of a hybrid relationship than a straight 501(c)(3) and, and city relationship in that the treasurer for the BDC is our city finance department. And our events are very much run by the Burlington B-Town Events and the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department. So in a sense, we've already taken a few steps to being a hybrid organization with those two things that are typically not in, in a 501(c)(3) separate from a city. But we'd be giving even additional support for, for better and enhanced events for our merchants through this relationship, I believe. So I have gone through a couple of different topics here on sort of why we got here and how we got here, who we talked to and, and some of the towns that we worked with to develop some best practices and then what our transition will be. We would look to build two documents. One would be a memorandum of understanding. So now that we would have an employee that is a city employee, they would be working closely with the nonprofit board. We'd want to state very clearly what the responsibilities are of the nonprofit board and the city department in achieving our downtown goals. So that would be the intent of the memorandum of understanding, more of a 30,000-foot view on what organizations are taking care of what responsibilities. The second document would be an annual contract. As required by statute, we, we do need to contract and have a public hearing for that contract annually that we would do with the BDC. So staff is proposing to do an annual contract with the Burlington Downtown Corporation in this new model and to show a new memorandum of understanding to the Burlington City Council here in the next month or two meetings, whenever we can get those documents together for you. This full transition budgetarily and staff-wise would, we are planning to take place as of July 1, our new budget year. So that's how we are setting up this transition to occur.
Great.
And I've, I've covered, I think, everything. I'll certainly answer any questions at this time and would, you know, offer Coleman or Sarah Beth to offer any additional comments in, in addition to mine.
Yeah. Sarah Beth, Coleman Rich, was there anything you'd like to add?
I would be, I'd be interested if anybody had any questions. We, we do have a treasurer. We have, we've had one onboard through our administration. So there's, there are some things I heard that aren't quite 100% correct. But if there's questions about this process, part of it is that we don't know, we don't know how it will. I think there's still some questions in terms of how it's going to work in that form. It's, it's, it'll, it'll be new to us. It'll be new to the board. So we, we, you know, we'll just have to see and like anything that's new, it's a, you know, it's a process. I, I, I think there'll, there will be, you know, periods of time where things go well and there'll be periods of time where we have to work through some things. I don't know if we can cover everything through a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, but we're working on a draft. The board is working on a draft for that to present. And, and with Peter, yeah, we'd like to start this, the first part of the fiscal year. And, and, and very appreciative that, that Sarah Beth would be working in that capacity.
Great. Sarah Beth, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, Coleman, I, I think the, it was just a wrong word, maybe. The city finance department does handle our payroll and our like accounts payable. I think that's what Peter meant. We do have an official treasurer on our board. But a lot of our monies run through city accounts. The only thing I wanted to add was just that, just of note, our board did have a Zoom meeting in April and did formally vote to move forward with drafting an MOU and moving forward with this process with the city. So there wasn't any major dissent. Everyone felt positive about moving forward.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from council members?
Just, just to clarify the, the treasury piece, because that's obviously a very important function. Where is the, where is the responsibility of the treasury going to lie? Is that going to lie with city staff, with our finance department? Or Harden, Coleman, what do you, what, what's the discussion topic there?
My, my assumption is it will lie with the city. Is that correct?
Rachel, you want to take that? Rachel, you want to take that question?
Sure, yeah. We would have a separate account for the, the downtown dollars so we can account for those downtown dollars being spent on downtown things. It wouldn't be completely lumped in with economic development, but it would be overseen by our finance department. All of those accountability checks and balances that, that come with any of our budgetary allocations would, would happen through the city.
Would that show up in our CAFR as a restricted fund with all the line item documentation? Is that how that would work?
Yes, sir. That's how we've been working with the finance department as we've been discussing budget. What would go in the separate account that's designated for downtown use?
If you guys recall, about five years ago, we then required an audit of, of all of our affiliate organizations such as the Air Force Authority, Downtown Corporation, which has to be submitted on an annual basis. And to Coleman and Sarah Beth, and the, the concept of, of advisory groups or boards can, can be enormously important and also get an awful lot done. I can reflect back in the days of, in Parks and Rec where we had an enormously strong advisory board who championed a number of different projects and was very active with our council. I think the, the board itself, in terms of its effectiveness, will, can basically be determined by how involved the board members want to be.
I want to follow up on that, Harold, because that is my, one of my concerns as well. I, I like this plan. I think it's good. But this, and I guess this board of directors for the Downtown Corporation has, is an amazing board and has been effective and has coalesced quite well and done a lot of good work. And I, I don't want to lose that. You know, I think once people see that as a city department, that they lose some of the initiative that they have had or could lose some of that. And I, my concern that I don't think there's an answer to this. I think there has to be a way for us to keep our eyes on how this is working out with the board and whether they still feel engaged to make some decisions and be involved on a volunteer level because it's probably one of the best boards I've seen around. And I think maybe the annual contract would be a good opportunity for us to review how, what, what is happening with board participation. So I think it's really critical in this case because it brings the message of the importance of downtown throughout the community because of the people involved in it.
A great point. I do share that same concern. I know there was a lot of effort put in by BDC to recruit that board and to find folks who really passionately love our downtown and are willing to put in the time and effort for that. So I think having a specific strategy to keep those folks engaged with BDC during this transition is a absolute must. Other questions from council? I had one as Peter, you were talking about some of the other cities that are using this hybrid model and the transition of communities towards it. I was curious if, what some of the cities that have been using this the longest are and if you've gotten any feedback from them.
Hmm, I, the longest I did not, I did not ask that question. It's interesting. I was actually, we were focused more on communities that had recently made the transition from a 501(c)(3) to a hybrid and what we need to look out for and what the. from a 501(c)(3) to a hybrid and what we need to look out for and what if they could have done it previously, what they would have done again. But the communities we spoke to the most were Wilson, Salisbury, and then some with Hendersonville and Garner, Harden's former city where he was city manager. We talked to the folks there for a while. And several of those are ones that have gone through that same transition. So no, we did not, I don't, I do not know who's, who's done it the longest as a hybrid. Because I know those three have changed over in the past five years or so.
Okay, those are good peer communities. I know we, we kind of look to what they're doing on other things that we do in our, our city. That's good. And Jim mentioned CAFR, and I know the BDC went through their own CAFR process just recently, because it got submitted to the board. Would that get rolled into the city's annual CAFR? So it wouldn't be two financial audits each year? Or would there still be two separate audits? Do you know? Kind of a minor question, but.
Rachel, do you want, Rachel, do you want to take that question, or should we, we can, Peggy's involved in the meeting as well, and Scott could link her in if we need her to help answer.
Yeah, I can start, and if Peggy wants to jump in on that, I think a lot of that would be hammered out in the contract. Because right now, it's part of our contracting agreement, that there's an audit and an annual report to the council. I think some of those details we can clear up there. But as far as tax dollars and council general fund allocations being put into downtown line items, if you will, they would be city accounts, city dollars, and would be, my understanding, would be reviewed through the city's process.
Okay.
Burlington Downtown Corporation is already a component unit of, considered a component unit in governmental accounting terms, and they are, we are already reporting on them in the, in our annual CAFR, and so that would continue to be so.
Okay.
So there'll, there'll be an hour CAFR annually, but if, if the board's making financial disbursements, are they going to, they'll still be required to, to do an audit based on how that money's being dispersed. Is that not correct?
If they remain a separate 503(c) corporation, yes.
That's what, that's, that's just a requirement. That's going to be required.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, Peter, thank you for that presentation. Sarah Beth and Coleman, we appreciate you joining in. And we appreciate your continued work on revitalizing our downtown.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next on our agenda is item D, right-of-way abandonment request for Shady Lawn Court. The council will consider an addition to the May 5, 2020 city council meeting agenda to adopt a resolution of intent to abandon the right-of-way of Shady Lawn Court and set a date of public hearing for June 16, 2020. This time we'll recognize city engineer Todd Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, we have these come up every so often. These are always initiated by citizens. These are not items that the city goes out and looks for. And so a lot of times, these are items that, that in general, people may not even know that that was right-of-way to begin with. So I'm going to do kind of an overview. Hopefully, everyone's screen is working properly. We have the downtown area. Williams High School, this is Hillcrest Elementary School.
Real quick, Todd, before you get too far into this, for council members, can, is there anyone who can't see the screen?
No, I see it.
Okay, great. All right, just wanted to make sure that council members could see the information. I know they've got it in their packets, too. All right, go ahead.
And so this right-of-way, Shady Lawn, is actually a short street that runs between Hawthorne and Harriet and Garfield. Back in 1958, it was actually plotted to go to this area on the north side of Harriet and Garfield. Harriet and Garfield split at this intersection. But this is actually plotted as right-of-way. It does not function as right-of-way. It actually functions as the church parking lot. So the church has come in and requested that this right-of-way be abandoned. The city does not have any utilities in this right-of-way. There are no water lines. There are no sewer lines. So there's, there's really no reason that it should remain right-of-way from a staff point of view. This would abandon this section on, following the North Carolina General Statute for Abandonment. This piece is actually fairly unique in some of the right-of-way abandonment we've had through you in the last couple of years in that the church owns all three parcels that surround this portion of the right-of-way. So all of these parcels adjoining the right-of-way are owned by the church. And they are requesting the right-of-way to be abandoned. What, what staff is requesting, if it's so inclined by council, is this item being added to the agenda tomorrow night. And I'll remind you that this item for, on the agenda is not to actually abandon the right-of-way. This follows general statute and only sets the date of public hearing, letting people know that you are considering the right-of-way to be abandoned. The public hearing would be set for the June 16 council meeting. And following the public hearing, you could adopt a resolution to abandon the right-of-way or not at your choosing. So again, the, the item for tomorrow night's consideration is just the intent resolution, and it also sets the date of public hearing.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council regarding this item? All right. There we go. I want to make sure I can see all our council members. Do I have consensus from council to add these agenda item of setting the date of public hearing to our consent agenda tomorrow evening? If so, can I see a hand raise? All right, the record show that myself, council member Ward, Hikes, Butler, and Owen, there's consensus to add this to the agenda. Any other questions regarding this item? And I will state that, again, this will be a public hearing for June 16, 2020 on this. All right, next on our agenda is item E, boards and commission reports. We have no reports this evening from our boards and commissions. So item F is our city manager report. And I'm going to ask Harden Watkins to, to join us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have two items this evening, and I'm going to ask Mike Dunn, planning and transportation director, to assist with those. As I mentioned to city council, I think via an email earlier this week, as a CDBG entitlement city, Burlington, with this being a city over 50,000 population, received around $277,000 in a one-time special allotment called CDBG-CV for COVID virus. You've gotten a few messages from us over the past couple of weeks as we've monitored that coming in from the federal government and gotten some feedback informally about how to use the funds. And I'm going to yield to Mike Dunn in just a moment, and Mike's going to lay out some ideas that staff has on that. It does not require formal council action, but we did want to get your feedback and comments tonight. And we, we're proposing dividing that into three categories, and Mike's going to share that with you. But first, I want to say we are thrilled to get some of those federal dollars making their way here to Burlington. And that's a, a good example of how things work, the federal government using existing channels, the CDBG program, which they already have, and just sending funds down. There's already an administrative mechanism and a rule mechanism for that. So we're thrilled that that's going to work out. And I'll ask Mike now to take, take the floor and talk through our suggestions on how we might divvy out those funds in the community.
Thank you, Harden. Mayor and council, as Harden mentioned, we did receive that one-time funding of $277,455. This is in direct relationship to the coronavirus, meaning that it was written into the act to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. So that's really the intent of these funds. There's three areas that are within our current action, annual action plan, which is one of the items HUD is looking at to make sure you already had that in your action plan to perform. Not these specifically yet, but these areas. The three areas that we're looking at, or excuse me, two areas, public services, that mean our agency relationships. I'll go into that in a second. And then economic development. I'll speak to that in a second as well. So the first one of those, we call safety net, and that's under public services. This continues to support our vital nonprofit service providers with enhanced needs. Everything from homeless needs, possibly, and I'll mention utility payments in a second, but their operating is at capacity, as you can imagine. I do want to note that we haven't received any specific requests yet, but interest. This is a new, a new release, but we're moving along on this. So we have the safety net approach with their vital operations, service providers. And then we do have the utility payment assistance, which was an interesting, unique eligible expense for this. But this is only in low to moderate income areas. We already have those identified by HUD. So that's, they would need to be in those areas to help them get current on their past due residential water bill, utility bills. This would have to be shown that it's about to terminate. It's not just their late paying, but they're about to be terminated from that. So that would be utility payment assistance. And these go to the provider, not to the client or the user. It goes to the provider. As you can imagine, we'll have proper documentation required. We don't have that quite yet, but it'll be part of the process. And then the other element is under economic development. It's what we call microloans. These are the businesses in those low to moderate areas I just mentioned that are already designated by HUD. And the economic development department with Peter would administer and support those. So we've got our public service grants of $206,817. And then our economic development microloan program at $70,638, excuse me. So that's a total of $277,455, $277,455. That allows to get those funds out in the most efficient manner and the quickest manner. The process for that will be very similar, although, to any other changes that we make. This will be an amendment to our action plan to bring these funds actually in. So you will be taking some action on June, once this is determined. The first thing we need to do is send out an RFP, or request for letter for interest, so we can get that information back from these agencies. They'll submit those, give us their proposals, and we would come to you in June if everything goes according to plan or schedule. We would have those ready to go, have our information from HUD back of how that needs to be administered. So we would come June 2, have that public hearing. If desired, we would approve that amendment, approve those allocations, and then we would go to work with those agencies. Some of those agencies, allied churches, local food banks, our feeding programs. And then, of course, the utility accounts seem to be, seem to be, without releasing this proposed request, the most interested areas in addition to our microloans. Just keep in mind, they need to be in those low to moderate income areas that are already determined. And then we would work with, like I said, economic development staff for the microloans. So our next steps, we would release that RFP to get that information back. They would be submitting that to us, tell us what their needs are. We would do the public advertisement plan to amend the 1920 plan that we're in right now. We do get to have that five-day comment period, which was waived by HUD, so it's only five days. And then we would have a public hearing at your June 2 meeting, like any other amendment that we do. And then from there, sign the agreements, monitor the agreements, and work with both community development and economic development staff on getting that spent. That's the information we have now. It seems that they're going to fit. Seems like we wouldn't have some, any major adjustments to these eligible activities. But we don't know the agencies yet specifically, who's going to submit for a request. I can answer any questions.
Mike, I've got one question initially, which is regarding the utility payment assistance. I know something you accentuated was that the account needs to be in threat of termination. And under the current environment where we're not shutting off anyone's water, does that create a barrier for us to actually deploy those funds?
Well, I think we could, I think, without knowing the specifics of HUD on that, or the requirements, is we could look at those accounts that are in jeopardy.
Okay.
That are, that are, that are going to be terminated.
So under normal conditions, they would be terminated based on non-payment, but we're not getting the water off, but we could apply those funds.
That's how I would approach it first stab at it. I would say we could do that.
I know that's been a conversation we've been having, is kind of how do we bring folks back into currency on bills?
Correct.
So.
And I'll add to that, I'll add to that, Mr. Mayor. I think at some point, so that's an order, executive order that came from the governor. At some point, that order may be removed or rescinded. And I think obviously then we have to make a decision, what is our city policy? You know, that's, that's maybe different from the governor's policy at that point. So that, that, and that can change as, as we move into the future. I think the other thing we would like to do, and if folks are watching this meeting, we'd also encourage folks to try to pay a little bit as they can, just so they don't get their balance so high. We understand folks have a lot of needs at this moment in time. But we don't want the balances to get so high that they just seem unmanageable or insurmountable for folks. So if they can, our staff is happy to work out payment plans with folks as we do all the time. We would love to see folks to make a little bit of progress towards the amounts that are due.
Okay. Other questions from council regarding this?
I, the question that I have has to do with the way the CARES Act is written, which is the first item said to prevent. And I don't, I'm not sure how I can, is there a way to justify any of this as prevention?
It can be one of those. Yeah, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be all three of them. It just means that's the, that's the intent or the, the spirit of these funds should be going towards something caused by our current crisis, by the COVID-19. Not something new, a new program, or and really, we haven't heard that from anybody. It's really helped me with what I'm doing now, you know? But we would vet that, we would vet that through the proposal process and evaluate to make sure it does meet the criteria and make sure it's eligible before, before we move forward with the award.
Other questions from council?
No, but to Kathy's point, you know, when you look at the, the bullet points spelled out on the, on the attachment that we received via email, and it talks about emergency assistance for rental mortgage assistance, utility payments, that being one. Two, homelessness, three, economic disruptions to microbusinesses. I mean, those are the core pieces of truly what, what this crisis has caused. And, you know, I would like to see as much emphasis and information out there for the economic disruptions on microbusinesses as much as anything, because that's, there is a void or a gap as you're looking at some of the other programs, the payroll, the paycheck protection program, some of the other things everybody's heard a lot about. The disruption to microbusinesses due to this is probably the one thing that gets discussed the least. And I'm sure in certain areas of our city, that's had a tremendous impact.
I don't know if Peter's available. We've been talking with the development office on that. If Peter has any comments.
Peter, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We've had a couple of conference calls, and I've also been involved with some of the International Economic Development Council's calls on deploying these funds. What I think Mike said was, was very much what we're trying to target everything on, folks that are in LMI areas or serving LMI persons with verifiable costs that, that we can keep them going for a couple of months, hopefully until things settle down and they can be operational. There, I think we've got a pretty good handle on how to set eligibility and how to make sure that these funds are getting to people who need them the most. And because of planned duplication, we really can't give them to PPP or idle recipients. So we're specifically targeting people, targeting people with these dollars that have not had any opportunity to get assistance.
Yeah, the people that hit that void. That's, that's exactly what I'm making reference to. Because of the lack of resources or, or banking relationships or things like that, they just weren't able to go after some of the other monies. And they're kind of sitting there limbo.
I think also, Congress, or Councilman Butler, that's where the NCRAP recovery funds that were just funded through the legislature are going to be a really big help also for folks that are maybe underbanked or underserved that have another opportunity to get some Band-Aid funds to keep them open. But everything you're, you're talking, I mean, you, you've been seeing this on the front lines. A lot of the services that economic development's been providing has been guiding folks who are, who don't have great banking relationships and don't have the professional assistance that can get them a PPP or another SBA product.
Yes.
Other council questions or comments?
Have we had people asking for help of the city? Has that occurred at all or can anybody report on that?
We've just had, we've just had a few phone calls from agencies that we normally work with so far that are asking about programs, emergency help. I don't think it's been heavy on the individual resident or citizen, but we've, you know, a few of those, basically the agencies are asking as they hear about these programs and just simply because they're running out of money as well. So we're starting, we received those and we're starting to see more of them and hopefully can fill the void with this process for proposals and get them an answer.
No, I'm getting emails or messages on a daily basis from businesses who have been struggling to navigate the SBA and the, all of their programs. And I appreciate all that Peter's team has done with Almant Strong and creating those resources, but it, as he mentioned, it's, it's challenging if you don't have a bad, solid banking relationship already or have ever navigated the bureaucracy that is the SBA. So I appreciate us stepping up to kind of fill in those gaps.
I would also, it's challenging for the bankers too. I've been at conversations. This is not a, not an easy process for anyone involved right now. It's very, very complicated.
Harden, did you have something you want to add?
I was just going to see if Peter had anything else to add in terms of requests related to Ms. Hikes' question.
Yes, I thank you, Harden. So through the Alamanz Strong group calls that we've been having, they're countywide with other individuals in the Alamanz chamber that are representing communities throughout our area. And this has come up multiple times on, you know, if there could be a local fund that could help, you know, I think everybody's been talking about something countywide. It'd be very difficult to do something just in one of our communities with how tight our borders and our communities are. But the, I've been a part of conversations with the Alamanz Community Foundation about talking about a fund for relief and recovery now, and then also a future possible fund. Those, the discussions have been around a revolving loan fund there. So yes, requests have been coming in for assistance. We've been trying to direct them to every source of assistance that we know that exists, but there are folks in the community that are talking about putting together dollars that would possibly be there to help businesses.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from council?
I have a quick question. Mayor, this is Bob. I have a question.
Okay.
Quickly, you know, to Mike Nun, with respect to sending out these requests for proposals, who is on that list that they, that will be receiving this request for proposal? Does Mike have a copy of the list?
Well, we, we can put a list together and surely would include those that we already work with, but it's going to, we go through our normal process of website, newspaper, media, this meeting, hopefully we'll get that word out, but you know, as expansive as we can be in our community in those LMI areas.
One, one quick question, the reason I ask is that I served on the advisory board for the Salvation Army. Does Salvation Army get a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, that's the reason I want to ask. And so that, that answered my question. Thanks.
You're welcome.
We'd like to add the comment and commend our, our federal leaders for releasing these CDBG funds. It's a narrative that we share every time we go up to Washington DC is how incredibly effective CDBG dollars are in the community. One for speed of deployment, one for accountability. And so we love sharing kind of what we're able to do as a community with CDBG dollars each year. So appreciate them recognizing that this is an existing tool and channel that cities are already geared up and ready to use. And for them to have released this amount of funds, not equal to what we get annually, but nearly, pretty darn close to, is a wonderful tool. So I want to thank them for that. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise Harden, did you want to talk a little about the CARES Act for linked transit?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my final item is just to share some information about CARES funding for linked transit. The city also received as, as being a transit provider, received significant funding through the CARES Act adopted by Congress. And I'll yield to Mike Nun and Mike can walk through the details of that funding as well.
Sure, thank you, Harden. The, we did receive, as we are receiving from CDBG and HUD, information from the federal transit administration through NC DOT. Nationwide, everyone is seeing an increase in their funding. This will come through our section 5307 grant. The amount for Burlington total was $3.1 million. We typically receive around a million in our normal grant allocation. So it's a tremendous increase. Again, to accomplish some of the things we talked about as far as impacts from the coronavirus, but also to sustain us somewhat a little bit further. That's why that, I think that's, that's a large number. It is, but that's what their thinking was in transit. That's something that has to continue going forward and not knowing the end point. So some of these, these amounts you may see other communities, especially the larger communities are getting rather large sums. So our number is 3.1 million. We are at the end of our life cycle. It's, it's perfect timing in a way of our light transit vehicle fleet. Based on federal requirements, the useful life is being met. By no means are they not in service or not able to be used, but that's something we're looking at per their specifications. Our fleet is now due for replacement. So we've allocated one and a half million dollars for that fleet replacement. They also allow you to allocate funds to operations, our daily, you know, our service provider, the bus drivers, all the expenses for that. And we provided 1.540,000 to that. The key with this money is that it's 100% funds. The figures I just mentioned, we normally would have to have a local match with. We, we do not have to match these at all. So when I say 1.5 million for capital, that's all federal funds that we get to use for capital and not required, not required to put a match to get that. We're receiving that straight out. Same way with operations. It's normally a 50/50 match. So for the 1.54 I mentioned, that's 100%. We're not required to put a local match to get that. So we'll be looking at things on the operations side and I will speak carefully about this. I don't know if, well, how they allow you to use that, but that's almost a, an annual budget figure right there for our operations. We use less than that in operations for, for a year. So we'll have to see how these things play out with the requirements and regulations. But this tremendous amount for operations and really a, almost covers completely a fleet replacement that we would have had to come and use local funds at least 10%, 10% for. If not, in operations is always 50/50. So that 1.5 million for operations is straight federal funds. I'm finding more out about this as well, but we think this is where we're going to land as far as being able to use these funds. And we'll, we'll update if anything major changes, but this is the strategy going forward for the 3.1 million.
So this is, this distribution of funds from the federal government's real similar, it behaves real similar to the Aura funds we got many years ago, where there's no match. It's just a straight line item contribution. Is there any merits to coming up with a fare free period for some length of time as we start working out from under COVID-19 and, and, and some of the, the state executive order restrictions? I mean, it's a, it's a small amount of revenue to our operational budget, but it would have a huge benefit to our community recipients that need this service. I mean, is that something that we could use this money for or, or at least have some dialogue over it?
Well, we've talked about that, which is, which is a great idea. And you probably see other systems doing that. Our equipment, we only have one entry door. Most of the other places that have fare free that you're seeing have the larger buses with the rear entry. So we've been very hesitant for two reasons. Number one, it's always interaction with the driver. Right. No matter what, if you're a rider, you're going to go by the fare box, you're going by the driver. And then two, we've seen in the last, as you're aware, the last three years that we've, anytime we do fare free, it almost doubles our ridership. So we've been trying to balance the health and safety, not only of the driver, but the riders with the volume of what fare free does.
Yeah. And, and to be clear, what I'm really making reference to is as we start coming out from this, where the environment becomes safer.
For sure.
You know, that's, that's specifically where I'm talking about because the, the, the monies that we're distributing back in the community, whether it's CDBG or whether it's these monies, there, there, there's no time period for doing what's right or doing what's necessary in the community. So as it, great, if it triples ridership, but as we start working out from under this thing, any little piece we can do to help, I think is going to be tremendously important. And I'd love to see us do that for an extended period of time, not for a 30-day window, but maybe where we even look at doing it for six months or something. If we've got this money, let's, let's put it to those that can use it most.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Mike, what's the timeline in terms of these funds in reference to determining if indeed we get them, but also what's the timeline in terms of expenditure of these funds?
I don't, I have not seen a deadline yet. I imagine some of that stuff will come out, but a lot of this they realize with the transit piece, this could go on, you know, into the, into the year scenarios instead of just the months because of just the impacts that transit's seen. So I have not seen an exact deadline or if there is one, but we'll find that out for sure. I don't think it would be anytime in the short term.
Right. Thank you. Yep. And I, I think as a follow-up to that, I think it's also important to note that through the MPO and the, and the TAC, ACTA was able to get some money that, that really helped them tremendously. Part was able to get some and then, you know, we're a unique MPO. We've got five transit providers, which is extremely unique when you throw in Orange County and TTA or whatever the acronym is for them now. It's a, that, that was, that was a plus overall for the county.
Tremendous. Yeah, I think it was over $6 million roughly. And then we received over half of that for linked transit.
I'd also like us to look at in the replacement area to look at whether or not we can afford at least some of replacement with electric. I've been discouraged about that in the past, but I still think that in the long run, that may be something really worth doing.
Okay.
I know Greensboro's done a lot with electric. We had the opportunity through the Metro Mayor's winter meeting to ride on one of their, their new electric fleet and they speak highly of them. They're not, they don't fill every route's needs obviously, but there are some routes that can sometimes be good for them.
Sure, for sure. Yep.
Other questions, comments? Appreciate that report, Mike. From just a general council consensus that we talked a little about fare free and Mike shared some of the concerns there, but just from a council consensus, is that something we would like Link to look strongly at and to have a strategic plan for fare free as we come out of this crisis? Is there any objection to, to that?
I think it would be good, but I do believe into, to follow Mike's statements that we need to certainly give staff time in reference to how we implement it and the impact on the service and so forth. And plan it out in a way that it can, it can function in a manner that we, we hope it towards not creates some issues that we don't perceive.
Other comments? I think biggest thing is look for how we strategically leverage the asset that is linked transit in the most effective manner to help our community recover would be my desire. So if that means doubling ridership when it's safe to do so, so more people can get back to work, get to those medical appointments and get back to day-to-day activities in the community, that means a lot to me.
Agreed.
All right, Harden, Mike, anything else you all had?
That's all I have on those items. Mayor, just mentioning tomorrow's meeting, Dr. Bruce Swords, who is the chief physician executive of Cone Health will be our first special presentation. It's on the agenda. I believe it just says Cone Health, but we have confirmed today that Dr. Swords will be available to dial in. And A is to share just some observations about what's happening at Cone Health. Y'all are getting those in my daily reports, but I also thought it would be helpful if y'all have questions for him or want to have some exchange of conversation. He's prepared for that as well. That's all I have. We'll see if Beverly Smith has any other questions or guidance for city council in terms of logistics for tomorrow's meeting.
Beverly, anything?
I do not have anything at the moment. I believe Ian will go over some of the items for tomorrow night. He'll, he'll conclude with some information on our Zoom link.
I will note that we did not have any requests for comment during this meeting, but that we will have comment periods available tomorrow as well. And folks can join via the communication I'll talk about now as well as it's posted online. And I spoke about it at the beginning of the meeting. So we do encourage public participation if folks so wish to through these meetings, even though they are in a virtual setting. So I want to thank everybody who helped participate in this and a special thank you to all of our staff and IT who helped put this format together as well as our legal team who helped navigate and make sure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is in this process. So again, we have no, no one indicating they wanted to speak for public comment. So this concludes our May 4th, 2020 Burlington City Council work session. We'll hold our May 5th, 2020 city council meeting tomorrow, also by Zoom as we did tonight. The meeting link and information to participate via the virtual platform as well as call-in information can be found at our city website at burlingtonnc.gov. And that meeting will be streamed via the city of Burlington's YouTube page, burlingtonnc.gov slash COBNC. So thank you everyone for participating and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well done, everybody.
Thank you.